Check, check, check.
Mic one, check, check one, two, test one, two. Check. Two is open, check two. Check one, two, two, testing one, two. Check. Check mic three, three, test three. Check this one. Testing one, two, two, check, 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 one, two. Number four, check four. There you go. One, two, check five, check five. Check, check. Check one, two. Check. Check mic six, six, six. Check seven, seven. Check eight, check eight, eight. Nine, check nine, testing one, two.
Check, check, check.
To accept the agenda? We have a motion, we have a second. Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. Are there any comments from the public?
No, Mr. Chair, there is not.
Thank you very much. The board will enter into the committee of the hall. And the first committee of the hall is the treasurer's report for August of 2023. Madam President.
Yes, if I could please have Mr. Gothrop to please come forward to share background information on the treasurer's report.
Okay. Hello? This is getting some used to. Hello? Yeah, all right. So we are the second month in our fiscal year, August. I did go through the treasurer's report at the committee meetings. I believe there were no questions, but some highlights. Total spending was 7.5 million, 5.2 out of the general fund and 2.4 roughly of all the other funds. We're seeing increase in tuition and fees compared to prior year. Our summer enrollment was up and also our fall expenditures. Salaries and wages and fringe benefits are down when compared to last year, but that's because of the accrual of the lump sum that was done last year. We had actually expensed it in the current year, and this year the lump sum payment went back to the prior year. The, as far as the balance sheet, other items, there is one thing I do need to mention, since we are having an early board meeting, I did explain that we had to have early cutoffs if there were some reconciliations that were not completed. Those will be caught up next month. So this is, anytime we have an early board meeting, this is what we do. That's really all there was as far as highlights.
Trustees, are there any questions? I have a question. Of the roughly 2.4 million expended in other funds, the $75,000 would have out of the maintenance and replacement fund. What did we spend that on?
The spending of the $75,000 would have been for, I don't have the detail here, but I can refer to it as just normal capital expenditures that we have going on.
Okay. Could you get that for us? Perhaps you can't get it tonight, that's okay. It's just so that we have an idea of what it's been spent for.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Gothrop will now talk about the background information on the local strategic value template that Michigan requires community colleges to complete.
Yes, thank you. The, what you have before you is a doc, is a resolution, excuse me, to approve the community college local strategic value. This is required to receive our full funding from the state of Michigan. We do this each year. The detail behind it, there are three categories. As you'll see, economic development, business or industry partnerships, educational partnerships, and community services. We are required to meet four of five in each one of those three categories. We have met all five in each, which we have done each year, and the detail was attached to the resolution.
Are there any questions, trustees? Seeing none, thank you for that report. Madam President.
I just want to make sure that the trustees do know that Jordan has the background information for the two firms to be considered. It was also sent to you by email, but just to make sure that if you needed a hard copy that those are here and have they been passed out. Great. That would be it, Mr. Chair.
That's it? Are there any comments from the board members? Seeing none, the meeting's adjourned. Saying none, the meeting's adjourned.
I call the meeting to order for the Mott Community College Board of Trustees for Monday, September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six forty-five P. M. All those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, invincible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Are there any additions to the agenda? Make a motion to adopt the agenda as is presented?
So moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Point of information discussion. What is the miscellaneous business? It's like new on the agenda, isn't it? Huh? Yeah, okay. I was just wondering, I don't know that I've seen miscellaneous business in the past.
I had just asked about that also, Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The agenda has been adopted. Communications. Are there any communications, Madam Secretary?
There's one communication, Mr. Chair. The communication comes from Vienna Charter Township dated September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and it reads as following. Dear taxing jurisdiction pursuant to Part Two of Public Act fifty-seven of two thousand eighteen, the Recodeified Tax Increment Financing Act, this, uh, this letter is to notify you that the Vienna Township Downtown Development Authority of Genesee County, Michigan, doing business at the Vienna Township Business Development Authority, has prepared a draft amendment to its current development and tax increment financing plan. A copy of this draft amendment can be found on our website at viennatownship.com for your review and comment. If you'd like to discuss the contents of this plan, please contact Township Supervisor and BDA Chair Joe Rizik to arrange a meeting at number provided and email provided. Per the requirements of PA fifty-seven, please note that the financial impacts of the plan upon all taxing jurisdictions have been estimated and included within the tables found in Appendix B. The public hearing regarding the adoption of the amendment is set for October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five thirty P. M. at Vienna Township Hall, thirty-four hundred West Vienna Road, Colio, Michigan, four eight four two zero. All interested parties shall be provided with the opportunity to be heard at the public hearing, and all written communications shall be considered. The testimony regarding merits of the plan and documentary evidence pertinent to the plan's adoption will be judged after the conclusion of the hearing. For further information concerning upcoming meeting dates and times, please contact me at eight one zero six eight six, or C.B. Bryan at viennatownship.com, sincerely yours, Cynthia Bryan, Vienna Township Clerk. Enclosures, public hearing notice via certified mail.
Mr. Chair, we will have someone attending that meeting from the administration.
Thank you, thank you very much. Nothing else, Mr. Secretary?
That be it for communications.
Okay. Comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three public comments that have been submitted.
Okay, just before you read them, I have to read something. All citizens who wish to address the board, or who wish to communicate with the board in writing, shall identify themselves and/or the group they represent, if any. They must all stay, state their reason for addressing the board. Citizens addressing the board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless the time is increased or decreased by consent of the board. A brief supporting the remarks may be made by the citizen, may be submitted to the board for its consideration. The board may limit the number of persons wishing to the, address the board on the same subject to three. Mr. Secretary, would you please bring them forward?
The first public comment we have is from Bobby Walton of Davis in Michigan, and the subject is management procedures.
Welcome.
Oh, I got it. Thank you. Good evening, thank you for taking my comments. Um, I am again speaking to this board as a member of the public. I represent the community that has expectations of you and the responsibility of oversight of your management and administration of this college. I think I've told you this before, and I take my role as a public representative very seriously. We are the third leg of your three-legged stool, administration, funding, and community. I am here to speak for the community. This board has been led by four people who started off on the wrong foot by violating the Open Meetings Act when leadership was chosen. This effort was led by the current chair, who I believe saw an opportunity to enact his own agenda to set policy for Mott College. Surely you don't think we are dumb enough to believe that four people, two of whom have never served on a board before, just fell into agreement during a meeting where there was no discussion prior to the vote? Two people taking on responsibilities they were clearly not prepared to assume. I believe Mr. Chair talked them into it. I believe Mr. Chair saw an opportunity to take advantage of them. Tonight, I am going to give you a list of reasons I am asking for Mr. Chair to step down and hand the gavel to someone else. This chair has shown poor management practices, weakening the ability of the college to move forward. This chair has shown an inability to observe the standards of Robert's Rules of Order, bullying his own board members and the college president in open meetings. He has shown a ready willingness to violate the bylaws of the board by encouraging and supporting erroneous motions made and actions taken by the inexperienced and naive board members. He does not lead by intelligence, but by arrogance and ignorance. You, Mr. Chair, led your three cohorts in firing your board attorney in April. You have not yet chosen representation in the interim while you go through the process of procuring legal representation for your board. You have weakened your board and made them susceptible to legal harm and loss. Mr. Chair, you admitted during the August meeting of this board that you fired your board attorney because she [inaudible] you in the dust-up over the misogynistic remarks you made during the organizational meeting of this board. The uproar over this was the first time in your term as chair you were asked to resign by students at Mott College. If you read your own bylaws, your board attorney is not allowed to represent individual board members without clear approval by the board. You reveal your ignorance in what you do and what you say. Mr. Chair, you justified firing your attorney by referring to one complaint received by you from a local political activist. A second complaint is clearly a phony. I suppose you or one of your supporters thought a second complaint would make a case. When questioned about the justification for the firing, you said your own investigation was good enough. Arrogance and ignorance. In May, when I first appeared before you and spoke, I reminded you that public trust comes from the laws, procedures, processes, rules, and standards we have to protect our interest. It has nothing to do with our affection for you collectively or personally. Four of you have violated those rules, standards, procedures, and laws, and we no longer trust you. You have been led by a bully, and you must give him your vote of no confidence. It is time to step down, Mr. Chair, to do otherwise is to fail the people who elected you to represent them. And I will conclude by telling you that one of my rules in all of the years that I have worked for government or in political agendas is that I have no permanent friends and no permanent enemies. In this case, you are not my enemy, but I disagree heartily with how you have directed this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Comment's been submitted by Elisa Kelly York, and she's a former MCC student from Montrose, and her subject is chair and vice-chair. I watched the August meeting with a great deal of apprehension and fear as I watched Chair of a man not only once but twice call votes as either passed or failed, but it was clear he did not listen to the a's or nays. I'm pretty sure I'm older than he is, but even my hearing is well enough to hear what the rest of the board is saying. If you do not want to listen, you should step down, and if you can't listen, then maybe have someone else call the votes, it's that simple. I watched as Vice-Chair Couch seemed to drift in and out of sleep or consciousness while she was asleep.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Make a motion to adopt the agenda as is presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Point of information discussion. What is the miscellaneous business? It's like new on the agenda, isn't it? Yeah, okay. I was just wondering. I don't know that I've seen miscellaneous business in the past.
I had just asked about that also, Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The agenda has been adopted. Communications. Are there any communications, Madam Secretary?
There's one communication, Mr. Chair. The communication comes from Vienna Charter Township dated September 12th, 2023, and it reads as following. Dear taxing jurisdiction pursuant to Part Two of Public Act 57 of 2018, the Recertified Tax Increment Financing Act, this is, this letter is to notify you that the Vienna Township Downtown Development Authority of Genesee County, Michigan, doing business at the Vienna Township Business Development Authority, has prepared a draft amendment to its current development and tax increment financing plan. A copy of this draft amendment can be found on our website at viennatownship.com for your review and comment. If you'd like to discuss the contents of this plan, please contact Township Supervisor and BDA Chair Joe Rizik to arrange a meeting at number provided and email provided. Per the requirements of PA 57, please note that the financial impacts of the plan upon all taxing jurisdictions have been estimated and included within the tables found in Appendix B. The public hearing regarding the adoption of the amendment is set for October 10th, 2023, at 5:30 PM at Vienna Township Hall, 3400 West Vienna Road, Colio, Michigan, 48420. All interested parties shall be provided with the opportunity to be heard at the public hearing, and all written communications shall be considered. The testimony regarding merits of the plan and documentary evidence pertinent to the plan's adoption will be judged after the conclusion of the hearing. For further information concerning upcoming meeting dates and times, please contact me at 810-686 or CB Brian at viennatownship.com, sincerely yours, Cynthia Brian, Vienna Township Clerk. Enclosures, public hearing notice via certified mail.
Mr. Chair, we will have someone attending that meeting from the administration.
Thank you very much. Nothing else, Mr. Secretary?
That be it for communications.
Okay. Comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three public comments that have been submitted.
Okay, just before you read them, I have to read something. All citizens who wish to address the Board or who wish to communicate with the Board in writing shall identify themselves and/or the group they represent, if any. They must all state their reason for addressing the Board. Citizens addressing the Board shall be limited to five minutes in making their remarks unless the time is increased or decreased by consent of the Board. A brief supporting the remarks may be made by the citizen, may be submitted to the Board for its consideration. The Board may limit the number of persons wishing to address the Board on the same subject to three. Mr. Secretary, would you please bring them forward?
The first public comment we have is from Bobby Walton of Davis in Michigan, and the subject is management procedures.
Welcome.
Oh, I got it. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for taking my comments. I am again speaking to this Board as a member of the public. I represent the community that has expectations of you and the responsibility of oversight of your management and administration of this college. I think I've told you this before, and I take my role as a public representative very seriously. We are the third leg of your three-legged stool, administration, funding, and community. I am here to speak for the community. This Board has been led by four people who started off on the wrong foot by violating the Open Meetings Act when leadership was chosen. This effort was led by the current Chair, who I believe saw an opportunity to enact his own agenda to set policy for Mott College. Surely you don't think we are dumb enough to believe that four people, two of whom have never served on a Board before, just fell into agreement during a meeting where there was no discussion prior to the vote? Two people taking on responsibilities they were clearly not prepared to assume. I believe Mr. Chair talked them into it. I believe Mr. Chair saw an opportunity to take advantage of them. Tonight, I am going to give you a list of reasons I am asking for Mr. Chair to step down and hand the gavel to someone else. This Chair has shown poor management practices, weakening the ability of the college to move forward. This Chair has shown an inability to observe the standards of Robert's Rules of Order, bullying his own Board members and the college president in open meetings. He has shown a ready willingness to violate the bylaws of the Board by encouraging and supporting erroneous motions made and actions taken by the inexperienced and naive Board members. He does not lead by intelligence, but by arrogance and ignorance. You, Mr. Chair, led your three cohorts in firing your Board Attorney in April. You have not yet chosen representation in the interim while you go through the process of procuring legal representation for your Board. You have weakened your Board and made them susceptible to legal harm and loss. Mr. Chair, you admitted during the August meeting of this Board that you fired your Board Attorney because she wasn't you in the dust-up over the misogynistic remarks you made during the organizational meeting of this Board. The uproar over this was the first time in your term as Chair you were asked to resign by students at Mott College. If you read your own bylaws, your Board Attorney is not allowed to represent individual Board members without clear approval by the Board. You reveal your ignorance in what you do and what you say. Mr. Chair, you justified firing your Attorney by referring to one complaint received by you from a local political activist. A second complaint is clearly a phony. I suppose you or one of your supporters thought a second complaint would make a case. When questioned about the justification for the firing, you said your own investigation was good enough. Arrogance and ignorance. In May, when I first appeared before you and spoke, I reminded you that public trust comes from the laws, procedures, processes, rules, and standards we have to protect our interest. It has nothing to do with our affection for you collectively or personally. Four of you have violated those rules, standards, procedures, and laws, and we no longer trust you. You have been led by a bully, and you must give him your vote of no confidence. It is time to step down, Mr. Chair, to do otherwise is to fail the people who elected you to represent them. And I will conclude by telling you that one of my rules in all of the years that I have worked for government or in political agendas is that I have no permanent friends and no permanent enemies. In this case, you are not my enemy, but I disagree heartily with how you have directed this Board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Comment's been submitted by Lisa Kelly York, and she's a former MCC student from Montrose, and her subject is Chair and Vice Chair. I watched the August meeting with a great deal of apprehension and fear as I watched Chair of a man not only once but twice call votes as either passed or failed, but it was clear he did not listen to the ayes or nays. I'm pretty sure I'm older than he is, but even my hearing is well enough to hear what the rest of the Board is saying. If you do not want to listen, you should step down. And if you can't listen, then maybe have someone else call the votes. It's that simple. I watched as Vice Chair Couch seem to drift in and out of sleep or consciousness while sitting there. Poor form, madame. You have a responsibility to me and all county residents to pay attention and to be engaged. I could go on, but you catch my drift. You owe it to us to do better or step down. It's okay if you can't handle this. It's not all a lot of responsibility. I voted for you too, but I won't make that mistake again. Pay attention, stay alert, ask good questions. You hear from the long-term success of Mott College and for the students. Try and act like it.
Thank you very much. Is there other, any other?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This comment's from Sean Murray, Genesee County taxpayer from Fenton, and the subject is Board Conduct. Dear Board of Trustees, I am writing this letter as a concerned citizen of Genesee County. To be clear, Andy Everman, Janet Couch, and Jeffrey Swanson are an embarrassment to Mott Community College. Is evidence, evident that they do not know what they are doing? They have a hidden agenda that is not too hidden, and they are unqualified to sit on the Board of Trustees. They do not value education. Do the above mentioned have a college degree? To see how they act, I fear they do not. They are making decisions for a college, and they do not understand the nuances of a college. They are making a mockery of Mott. The Board of Trustees is too important of a role to learn as you go. Too many lives are at stake, and the foundation for people who are trying to make a better way for themselves is being diminished by people who are making Mott a laughingstock. If the Board continues in this manner, it won't be long that Mott makes the national news for all the wrong reasons. They do not respect the President's position. They do not respect the President, who is a highly educated and qualified individual. I can only imagine how difficult it must be for Dr. Beverly to have to sit there and endure the disrespect and ignorance displayed by certain Board members who are being led by Andy Everman. Dr. Beverly makes the community proud. She displays grace and elegance as she keeps a straight face sitting next to someone who clearly tries to lead by bullying, lying, and being deceitful. We see straight through you, Andy. Michael Freeman and Art Reyes are doing their best to maintain some integrity of the Board. Mr. Freeman made the community proud by standing up for himself, Dr. Beverly, and the college. He comes from a place of knowledge and experience. He speaks with passion and integrity, as does Art Reyes, and for that, we are thankful. Andy Everman, in one of your many efforts to bully Dr. Beverly and put her down, you failed miserably. What you did instead was insult every employee at Mott Community College when you tried to use a Detroit Free Press article based on the rankings of community college completion rates nationwide against her. As you continue to embarrass, embarrass yourself, please know we are watching. Because of the lack of knowledge and integrity displayed by some of the Board of Trustees, the college should be concerned about losing their credentials, accreditation that the faculty, staff, administrators have worked so diligent, diligently on to gain and maintain. In less than a year, Mott is now at risk, not due to employees or the President, but due to, due to the incompetence of certain Board members being led by Andy Everman. Andy, you are unfit to be on the Board of Trustees and unqualified. To employees, students, and community, deserve better.
Are there any other comments?
That completes the public comment.
Thank you very much for each of those. New business. Have there been any questions submitted for the new business?
No, there have not.
Okay. Item number 1.62, Treasurer's Report for August.
Move to accept.
We have a motion to?
Second.
And we have a second. Are there any questions? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item number 1.63, Resolution to Approve Community College Local Strategic Value Template. Is there a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. The ayes have it. Item 1.64, Resolution to Approve Interim Board Attorney. We have two firms.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Simon Figura and Parker as our interim Board Attorneys.
Okay.
Support.
We have a motion and we have a second. Are there any discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Swanson?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I just received the information this morning from Dr. Beverly. She sent it to my email. Haven't had a chance to go over it, and I discussed this with Mr. Freeman. At this point, I can't vote for him because I don't know anything about him.
Okay.
So that'd be a nay.
Nay. And my vote is a nay. The motion fails for lack of a two-thirds majority. Would anyone like to make the motion for the other firm?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
There's, there's four of us here, and obviously we're split. I feel I'd be pointless at this point.
Okay. Moving on. Approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, nay. The minutes have been approved. Informational reports. Jeff, the Finance Audit Committee?
Uh, we held a meeting Wednesday. Mr. Reyes was there by, via Zoom. Uh, Mr. Daly, I believe, is still in, in doctor's care. But we had the meeting. The minutes are out in the front there.
Thank you. Personnel Committee. Mr. Freeman, were you in attendance?
Yes. Uh, the Personnel Committee took place last Wednesday at 4:00 PM. The, uh, minutes from that meeting are available online.
Thank you. The MCCA Board of Directors Meeting. Madam President, can you report on that? Is Mr. Daly's not here?
There has not been a MCCA Board of Directors Meeting to report on.
Okay, thank you. The ACCT, Art, do you have a report for us?
The ACCT Board has not met since our last meeting.
Item number 1.65, Unfinished Business. Board Attorney Procurement. Madam President?
Can I have Mr. Pathrav to please come forward?
Hello? No? Yeah, okay. Um, to give you an update on the Board, Attorney Permanent, I guess, resolution that will have to be made. Um, we did get confirmation from five Board members that the process that we used last year, including the scoring, scoring matrix, was acceptable. Um, we sent that out Monday evening. It'll be posted for 10 days, at which time we will pull that and then take all the, uh, the applications, I guess, for lack of a better word, in, and then give it to you guys. As we did before, I think you came in and reviewed those, and then we'll score those and then proceed from that.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Saying none. Madam President, does that, could I lose that report? Thank you very much. Administrative Reports. President, the Enrollment Update, please.
Yes, can I have Mr. Wilson, please, to share our enrollment progress?
Hello? I knew it wasn't gonna work. Okay, there we go. Thank you, uh, Dr. Beverly, Mr. Chair, Trustees. Uh, happy to report that, uh, for the fall, uh, term, uh, we are thriving. Uh, our head count, uh, at 6521, uh, which represents an 8.3 increase from last year. Uh, our contact hours at 66,629.5 represents uh, an 8.5 increase from last year. Uh, these numbers are incredible, and I'd like to publicly thank, uh, the entire college, certainly my colleagues behind me. Uh, it has been a team effort, uh, all the way, and, uh, and they deserve, uh, your respect. They deserve your appreciation. Uh, and they certainly, uh, make me, uh, very proud, uh, as their leader. So thank you, everybody, for this. If I may, just a couple items of note about our progress this fall. Uh, our enrollment totals represent a three-year high, uh, in head count and contact hours. Uh, this is the highest we've been since we were hit by the onset of the pandemic. Uh, as you, uh, heard me talk about this summer, uh, the case was the same in the summer. So this is two consecutive semesters, uh, where we're reporting, uh, the kind of substantial progress that the college is making to, uh, get back to its levels of, uh, enrollment, uh, prior to the pandemic. Uh, in real numbers, uh, that's an additional almost 500 students, and another 5, uh, 5,200 hours in contact. Uh, so really substantial gains. But, uh, the work is not finished. Uh, I, I don't know, uh, if the new trustees remember, but, uh, in October of '21, uh, Dr. Beverly charged, uh, the administration to give an enrollment report, uh, that was themed, uh, Find Them, Get Them, and Keep Them. And so, uh, in preparing for today, I'm happy to report that we found some of them. And so now the page turns to keeping them. And so we need to focus on retention that will really be, uh, our focus to keep our students, uh, and make sure they're successful. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank your entire team for the diligence that they've done. As Madam President, are there any more?
Well, I was just gonna make sure, are there any questions about, uh, the enrollment and what we've done to get here and what we're gonna do to stay here? Any questions?
Mr. Freeman?
Um, so, uh, through the chair. Just wondering, what, what are we looking at, like statewide or even nationally with averages? Are we seeing an uptick with most, most educational institutions? Or, uh, and do we know kind of generally how much?
So, uh, I have, uh, been, uh, keeping track on what's happening across the state. Um, we are, uh, outperforming most institutions in the state in terms of percentage increase. Uh, the good news is, though, that we're noticing a lot of institutions across the state are seeing some degree of increase. Uh, and so, uh, you know, that's definitely promising. Uh, I've also, uh, talked to my colleagues across the country, and the news there is mixed. Uh, some institutions are thriving as we are. Uh, others are, uh, experiencing loss. And so, uh, it's something that you have to be intentional about and diligent across the board. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Madam President?
So we'll now, uh, have, um, Human Resources to come forward and celebrate our new employees.
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, I'm excited to share, we have 16 new people that we have hired over the last month. So we're gonna show you who they are on the screen there, and I'm just gonna give a brief introduction of each of them. So we have Biology Instructor Jeremy Lind. He's returned to Mott to teach. He has been an Assistant Professor of Biology at Schoolcraft. And prior to that, he worked as a Support Specialist for Biology at Mott for five years. So he holds a Master's in General Biology from the University of Michigan-Flint. Next, we have Crystal Ruze, who is also a Biology Instructor. She taught High School Sciences at Carmen Ainsworth and Linden Community Schools. She's taught part-time at Mott, and she earned a Master's in Biological Sciences from Michigan State University. Next, we have CAD Instructor Oliver Johnson Jr., who earned a Master's Degree in Manufacturing Engineering from Kettering. He worked in both the automotive and chemical industries for 20 years as a mechanical engineer before becoming an instructor for engineering for the Saginaw Public School District. Next on the list, we have William Benke. He's a welding instructor. He is a Certified Senior Welding Inspector and has an Associate's in Welding from McCombe Community College. He worked for Ford Motor Company for 30 years prior to transitioning to a Senior Welding Engineer. And he has taught at Mott part-time over the last few years. Next, we have Cosmetology Instructor Joseph DeCharme. He is a Mott graduate and earned a Bachelor's in Business Administration from Northwood. He has also taught part-time at Mott, and for 27 years, he has owned and operated a salon and spa. Next, we have Dental Assisting Instructor Jennifer Hertzberg Weaver. She has over 20 years of experience as a dental assistant for offices in Holly. She's taught part-time since 2018 at Delta and Mott. She's a Mott grad. And she graduated from the University of Michigan-Flint with a Bachelor's in Healthcare. Next, we have Dental Hygiene Instructor Coordinator Kiana Morris, who graduated from Mott as well and CMU with a Master's in Health Administration. She has taught part-time at Delta and Mott, and she has over 20 years of experience working as a dental hygienist and dental assistant, um, for a doctor in Saginaw. Next, we have Early Childhood Instructor Michael Martin. He has 30 years of experience in early childhood education. During the last eight years, he held the position of Education Manager at the Learning Care Group. And he also has experience as an adjunct instructor at Baker. He has a Master's in Family Studies from Spring Arbor University. Next on the list is Geography Instructor Nicole Johnson. She's taught part-time at Mott and Oakland Community College. She was a GIS Business Analyst at Oakland County and GIS Senior Support Analyst at Manitron Incorporated. She has a Master's in Geography from Western Michigan University. Next on the list is Mathews, or Mathematics Instructor Stuart Mitchell. He completed a Master's in Mathematics from Wayne State University. He's been an adjunct instructor at Henry Ford Community College and University of Detroit Mercy. Another mathematics instructor is Jennifer O'Brien, who earned a Master's in Mathematics from Western Michigan University. Jennifer has taught part-time at Mott since 2021. Nursing Instructor Sherry Pervs worked as a general-duty charge nurse at both a general medical floor and neonatal, neonatal intensive care unit and as a charge nurse at Carriage House. She's taught part-time at Mott as well and has a Master's Degree in Nursing Education from Walden University. And next is Nursing Instructor Susan Bader, who has worked as a registered nurse for 16 years in med-surg units and critical care and most recent- and most recently as a clinical coordinator. She worked at Hurley Medical Center and Covenant Healthcare. She's taught it part-time at Mott and has a Master's in Nursing from Walden University. And the last full-time instructor I'm going to introduce is Physical Therapy Instructor Coordinator Ashley Wines. She earned a Doctorate of Physical Therapy Degree from CMU. She has 14 years of experience as a physical therapist and 10 years' experience as a clinical director. Next on the list is Financial Aid Specialist Elizabeth Peters, who comes from Cleary University where she was a Senior Financial Aid Coordinator. She holds a BBA from University of Michigan. And last but not least is Financial Aid Specialist Ian Enos. He's a Mott graduate. He's working on a BA in Data Management and Data Analytics from Western Governors University. He has over 15 years of retail experience and most recently worked in the mortgage industry. So we're happy to introduce them to you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Did any of them have comments for us? Did any of them have comments for us?
I have something else.
Okay.
Um, so can I have, uh, Dr. Jackson, Dr. Mycinski, and Dr. Guru to please come forward and, uh, Mr. Wilson will share their honors, please. And you can pull a chair up. Chapter three. Yeah. There we go.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Beverly. Um, we want to acknowledge, uh, the great, uh, news and, uh, recognitions, uh, as always, that, uh, the Mott family has. So first, um, uh, first of two, want to, uh, celebrate Dr. Madonna Jackson for being elected VP for Professional Development, uh, for AWCC. Uh, as you know, that's the American Association of Women in, uh, Community Colleges. Uh, and also celebrate Dr. Jackson, uh, for her nomination to, uh, the state's Perkins, uh, Planning Committee as well. So two important, uh, positions there for Madonna. So we want to give her a hand.
And can I interject?
Please.
The first one is a national position.
It, it is.
She has been elected nationally by her peers, uh, to become the American Association for Women in Community Colleges Vice President for Professional Development.
My apologies, I do see nationals, it's blaring at me right there. So yeah, congratulations on that regard. Um, also, Dr. Rebecca Mycinski has also been appointed to the, uh, Carl Perkins, uh, State Planning Committee as well. That committee helps us with planning on how we expend, uh, uh, funds for our career and technical education programs. So certainly, uh, congratulations to Rebecca. And also, uh, I think I want to turn it over to you. You want to talk about the scholars here? Okay?
Good evening. I am really pleased to announce that the nursing students at Mott Community College were represented well at the August 21st RACOR Educational Foundation Scholarship Awards. Mr. Michael RACOR is the founder of the scholarships and he believes that education is the surest way to prosperity. Um, so in partnership with the McLaren Foundation, there are 30 RACOR scholarships named after exceptional nurses, many of whom, uh, overcame obstacles. And they are awarded to students who closely follow in their footsteps. So we got eight of such awards. They amount $1,500 apiece. Um, and so we have a nice, long list of these students and we'd like to thank the RACOR Educational Foundation and the McLaren Foundation for their commitments to breaking financial barriers and promoting student success.
And can I interject as well? That up until, I want to say, four years ago, those scholarships were only for students at universities. But in working with, um, McLaren's Foundation, they knew the excellence that we have with our students and so they worked with the funder to ensure that our students could as well buy for those scholarship funds. So they always have a good amount of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes, uh, the president's report.
Okay. Comments from the board? Mr. Reyes?
Yes, um, earlier tonight, we did the unveiling of the portraits of three former, um, board members. It was a really nice ceremony and I wanted to offer congratulations to Anthony Branch, Matt Norwood, and Anne Figaroa and thank them for their service on this board. I had the pleasure of serving with each one of them. Um, and then I also want to, I'm disappointed that we were not able to move past on the interim board attorney. I feel that the board is left, um, exposed. And this is something that we need to, we really need to make sure that we are, we are on top of. Um, I'm glad to hear that the procurement process is moving in a manner in which it should. Um, and hopefully, before long, we'll be able to put together those numbers and have people in so we can interview and, and get a board attorney.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Uh, yes. Uh, just want to congratulate the college on the increases on headcounts and contact hours. Um, you know, in this economy right now, um, sometimes it's hard to convince individuals that furthering their academic career, um, is ultimately, um, you know, in the long term, it's the best thing for them. And I think, uh, the college has been very successful where even in some places, you're actually still seeing decreases in, uh, enrollment. Uh, another comment, just, uh, based on some of the, uh, the written comments, uh, you know, that were presented and one in particular where it disparages, um, two of our board members, uh, both Jeff and Wendy. Um, I've gotten to know them very well. They are very committed to this college. Uh, they're good people. Uh, they're new on the board and even when, if Jeff says that he doesn't understand that, um, he's being honest and he's talking about where he wants assistance and help to be a better trustee. Um, during the, uh, Michigan Community College Conference, they were at every single session and they were listening, processing, talking about it. Um, I think as new trustees, you know, it's hard when you first start and getting your bearings, but I think that in, in defense of both of them, um, they are committed to this college. And, you know, I think that, uh, they should be given the opportunity to show that. So, just want to say that.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson?
I just, thank you, Mr. Freeman, for that. And Wendy and I are trying to learn and, uh, we will get better.
Two comments. Dana Nassau allows trustees to participate remotely that have a health concern. Bay Meadows Community College was the first one that did this. So given that, if at our next meeting, Mr. Daly is up to it, we will be able to have him also participate in the meeting. The trustees that received their photos this evening for the wall, um, I have also served with all three of them and I concur with Mr. Reyes as to the good people and caring people for our college that they are. The other thing that's coming up later this week, which all the faculty and staff, students and trustees should be well aware of, on the 21st of this month, Dr. Beverly will have a birthday and we all need to wish her a happy birthday. So, happy birthday. That concludes my comments and we have no executive session planned. So, meeting is adjourned.